I call this meeting of Fayette County Commissioners to order.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no comment between "one nation" and "under God."
I had a veteran tell me how to do the pledge of allegiance and it's "one nation under God," not "one nation under God." So I smile every time I say this, all these other people are behind me when I'm doing the pledge of allegiance. They stop. Would you like to please?
Sure.
You get to stand over here and...
I'll pass these out then.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure, copy. I'm Joe Edwards from SRI. I'm the vice president.
Joe, good to meet you.
It's good to meet you. Good to see you again. Good to see you again. And basically, the day of the tax sale this year, you three became the proud owners of 45 tax sale certificates. And in years past, SRI has done a certificate sale on behalf of the Commissioners. It's been, depends on the year, mildly average, basically, but there's always a bunch left every year. And so, the assessor, or the assessor, the auditor asked me to talk about deed sale. And I kind of talked about Wayne County, they do a deed sale every year, they never do a certificate sale. They take every leftover property, turn it into a deed, and then sell it. And they've been very successful at that. In fact, one year, they sold everything on their list. So, you know, I walked out of the sale, they had, in theory, they had no unpaid tax parcels in the county. Now, obviously, there's bankruptcies and there's legal disputes that, it's not actually accurate, but it's as close as it can be on paper. So, I presented to you an addendum to your contract to do a deed sale, and the attached resolution with the properties, there's 44 properties for a total of slightly over $200,000 in taxes. Now, very similar to the certificate sale, the purpose of the deed sale is not to make money, it's to get properties that have been regurgitated for years, as these 44 have, back on the tax rolls. And what Wayne County has found, and the counties that do deed sales regularly, and I recommend you Commissioners that know any of the Commissioners over in Wayne, call them and ask how their success has been, because it's really, they don't even think about a certificate sale every year. They've already started this process for a deed sale this year. But they get the properties back on the tax rolls, and they can sell, you know, people will buy a deed for more money than they would buy a certificate, because they don't have to mess with lawyers, title companies, and all that. They buy the deed, and they record it, and they're done. They bought it. They bought a piece of property for $500, where they could have bought the certificate for 200, they'd rather, you know, for 300 more dollars, get the deed and not have to mess with...
Legal fees.
The legal, hire a lawyer, lawyers, nobody likes lawyers, right? Nobody likes, I say that about title companies. Dang, why'd you look at me like that for? Title companies, it's not all right. It's an intimidating process, and when you stand here at the tax sale and hear me explain all the things you've got to do, people are getting up and leaving, and they're like, "I don't want to do all this." And here, they're buying a deed for, let's say, 500 or $1,000, whatever they're buying it for, they're going to get their deed within a few days, it's going to be recorded, and they're going to own the property adjacent to theirs, or whatever, and improve their value. Yes, sir.
They get this deed sale, once they buy it, the sale, do they get possession of that property right then?
No redemption period. It's, you're right, they get, they own it, they get the deed, it's recorded, they have possession. And a tax sale's a year, and a certificate sale, 120 days, redemption period, you've got to wait. The county does the work, so the county waits the redemption period out. So the county has 120-day redemption period. County has to send notices within 90 days, just like you're the buyer, and then the deed goes in the county's name, and then the county sells the deed. And we talked about some properties that need to be combined, and that is a process that would take place. After the county obtains a deed, then we can sell those deeds together. They wouldn't be put together before the county got the deed, it'll be after the fact, before the sale.
But we would, these deeds, the deeds, the properties that we'd receive deed on in the Commissioner's name, we would auction those rather than sell them on, through real estate agent or whatever?
That's the proposal. You would have a deed sale right here in this room, just like you've had a certificate sale. Look exactly the same. In fact, even to the looks of the buyers, there are going to be a lot of the same buyers at a certificate sale, they're going to be at a deed sale. But again, you're going to have adjoining landowners that wouldn't probably buy a certificate, but they would buy the deed. And a lot of these people are using the property, maintaining it. You know, I've gone to some communities and driven by these properties, and you see some of them with, you know, kids' play gems on them, and gardens, you know, I've been tempted to buy one of them just for the produce, I mean, they're nice gardens, they maintain these, because they know nobody's going to buy them, because if the tax sale are being offered for thousands, because over the years, the taxes just keep going up. Maybe it was a demolition from five years ago, so you've got the $5,000 demolition lien, plus all the taxes, so you're trying to offer this vacant lot the size of this room for $8,000. Well, the people next door are maintaining it, and kids are playing on it anyway, they're not going to buy it at a tax sale for that, because nobody is. So they just basically have free use of this property. Now, they might buy it for 500, because it will improve the value of their property, even if it's just the size of this room.
But, so otherwise, we don't, once we obtain the deed, we don't have to sell the property to cover the back taxes? Is that what you're saying?
No, the back taxes get wiped off.
They get wiped off.
Once it goes to deed to the county, the back taxes get wiped off, and no taxes are due then until we sell it as a certificate, or a deed sale, and it gets deeded into the name of a private citizen.
But on the other hand, you get property back on the tax rules faster that way?
Not really faster, but you're more likely to get them back. I mean...
At least they're on the tax rolls.
Right, they're headed, they're in the hands of a person that is going to pay the taxes. As opposed to, you know, offering them a certificate sale, sometimes people buy them at such a cheap price at the certificate sale, then they start looking into all the stuff they've got to do, they've got to hire a lawyer for 500, title company for 300, or whatever, and they're just like, you know, "Honey, I don't want that." So they just don't, they just let it go, and the county keeps whatever they paid, which might be 200 bucks, or whatever. So they forego their Starbucks for a few weeks, and just give up that money instead of going forward.
I've talked to Wayne County Commissioners, and I couldn't understand why we were having so much trouble. I didn't realize the difference that they were doing deed sales instead of certificate sales, because I know Ken Kostel talked at one of the Commissioners' meetings, and I went up, what they were doing with this money, and I thought, "If they don't allow us, they apply it to the taxes."
Right.
So we've been selling it totally wrong.
Yeah, and, yeah, Ken's a great promoter of doing the tax, and he's, you know, he's invited different Commissioners to our sales, and, you know, Henry County's had people come up, and, and, you know, once upon a time, the deed sale was the most common type of sale, and then they invented the certificate sale, the General Assembly did, and then that's just an easier, cheaper way to do it. But you don't get the results. I mean, easier and cheaper isn't always best, and...
It's not cheaper when we have to pay you every year to do the same thing, sell the same piece of property.
Right, advertise the same properties, you have to send out the same notices to the same people. But, and you know, our fee on this is the percentage, but we charge $100 per property, send the notices. But we don't do the title search, so that's the thing, you all would have to negotiate a price with a local title company. We would work with them in terms of the information that we need from them, always easy to do, I mean, their title companies are easy to work with. And I don't know what, I mean, I feel like in Fayette County, you could probably, and maybe talk to the Henry County Commissioner, or the, sorry, Wayne County Commissioners, because they're probably using a title company that you guys could use. And they, you know, they're used to doing that, they negotiate a fee.
We have a title company across the street this way and one across the street that way.
Yeah, so, you know...
We'd probably be obligated to use the ones...
Right, and, and, you know, some of these are cross-county, so, you know, maybe they're going to work for Wayne, but negotiate a fee with them, and those are costs right there.
Yeah. So the title has to be researched to make sure that they're...
And notices sent. So they look up the interested parties and give them to us, and we send the notices.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the title search is done first?
It's done very first, ordered right away. It'd be, it'd be the first step in this process. You guys sign the contract, my thing I'd tell you is, first of all, do a calendar of events, but the first thing on that event is order the title searches, because we need to send the notices around, what was the date of your sale, Jane?
October 2nd, I think.
Yeah, so, around Christmas time. So we'll, and, you know, we do all that, so, but we've got to have the results of the title search by mid-December, because then we've got to load them in and send the notices by about Christmas time.
So then, when would the deed sale be? First of the year?
It would be in April-ish.
In April?
Yeah, mid to late April.
And that would be on these 44 properties?
Right.
And then, our normal tax sale is in the spring also, isn't it?
It's in the fall.
It's in the fall?
Yeah, October 2nd this year.
October, okay.
And we'll move it up a couple of weeks, or back a couple of weeks. Generally, September, October are the months, the timeframe for the tax sale. Now, your certificate sale is always in the spring, that's probably what you're thinking about. But we wouldn't have a certificate if we had a deed sale.
Okay. So this, the deed sale would replace the certificate sale?
It would, yeah.
We would no longer do the certificate sales?
Well, correct, and if you, if this is successful enough, and you want to do a deed sale every year, then we just, that would be, we'd kick into that boat, and we'd start the process, and Jane and Jill, right after the tax sale, calling, ordering the title searches, and start the process, kind of like they do in Wayne.
What would, for instance, if, if 30 out of these 44 sold in the deed sale, what happens to the other 14 then?
They just sit there.
But they are the property of the Commissioners?
They are, and we would...
And they're deeded to the Commissioners?
Correct, and I would suggest that they just go back on next year on the deed sale. You already own them, nothing has to be done.
Yeah.
You don't have to do any noticing, you don't have to do any title work, no legal fee. You own them, and you can put them on with whatever leftovers we have from next year, which would be far fewer after a deed sale. I mean, that's, in fact, I was looking at some numbers today, Wayne, we, I mean, we did their deed sale for years, 150 properties, they're down to 40 now. I mean, over the years, it dwindles, well, that's the whole object, is, you want every property in Fayette County to be collecting taxes.
On the tax rolls.
Right, yes, sir.
Could you put them on a computer and run for sale all year long?
Yes, we can do that. We don't, we can, like an eBay.
Yeah.
You can buy it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can, and frankly, no county really has wanted to do that. I mean, we do that in other states, but in Indiana, we just don't have very many internet sales anyway. I think we only have four counties that do their tax sale on the internet.
Just contract with a local...
And it's, you know, Lake, St. Joe, the big ones, because they have so many.
They show up.
But, yeah, it can be, it's like a, it's like a buy-it-now on eBay.
Yeah.
And it stays up there, and then, you know, you have a live sale every year, you can pull them down and offer them at the live sale, and then put them back. There'd be no reason, I know, of why you couldn't do that. You can say, "We do it in other states," and we've talked about doing it in Indiana, we just have never had a Board of Commissioners that was that progressive.
Put them on the website for counting, just run them continuously.
Is this the non-tech person talking?
The guy that doesn't give them, they don't give them once in a while.
He's off his emails, he doesn't do email.
He doesn't do emails, but he wants to have an eBay tax auction. That's good.
Oh.
You're a closet computer geek.
You're trying to tell us you don't know anything about that computer?
I don't know nothing about it.
Well, I don't, I don't see the negative, I don't see any negative out of it.
Well, again, the only negative is you've got, you're going to have some upfront expenses, which I feel like you're going to get all back. I mean, I don't think Wayne County has ever not gotten their money back, even back when they were doing 150 properties. So let's say you've got 44 properties, you're going to have $10,000 in fees upfront to do the sale. And then if we show up here to sell, and you sell nothing, there's your downside. But like I say, that's not ever been, never seen not selling anything. We've always covered the costs.
That's a big drawback on regular tax sales, when you can't get into the property for a year.
Yeah, right.
Chance they may get taken away, or they're getting rid of it, you know, it's final.
Yeah, this is a final sale.
Right, it's a deed, it's like, just like a share sale. I mean, when you leave, you get the deed in a few days, yeah. And we, at the sale, we collect the recording fee, so nobody can slip through the cracks, because sometimes, you know, somebody buys a property for 100 bucks, then they start thinking, "Maybe I don't want it," so they don't record the deed, because then they never get the tax bill. So we would collect as part of the fee that day, the recording fee, and it would, we'd get, they'd be recorded, so the tax bill would have a place to go. So, if they're here, and they're going to know that when I got their paddle up, they're going to know that these properties are going to get deeded in their name, if they, if they're the successful bidder.
They pay cash that day?
They got to pay that day, for all the sales, yeah.
Okay.
So, can we put a minimum on that property? To cover that cost of that property, that we've, that investment we've got into that property?
Oh, your minimum will cover, yes, yes, the answer's yes.
Okay.
Yes. And you guys don't set the, you don't set the price, it's a, it's an appraisal, but it involves the assessor, and, like Wayne County, anything with an improvement on it, I think they range from 500 to 1,000, anything without improvements, 100 bucks. And that, you know, that, that 100 bucks covers, covers part of their fee. They don't worry about that, because they haven't had a problem with it. They sell, you know, they, we leave that sale with a lot more money that they received than they've spent on the title searches and on the noticing, so. But the answer's technically yes.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
I'm an assessor, so one question we had, we've been trying to do it, but we couldn't because of the back taxes, but 2159 Lincoln, there's nine parcels, and a lot of it's on the hill, and I just ran it, it's like $6,885, just in advertising and tax sale fee, but would these parcels, and they're not big, and they're up on the hill, and there's a little bit of flat level up top, but would each of those parcels be considered as separate parcels, even though they're right there together? And the lady died who owned them, and...
To get the property into the name of the Commissioners, they would be treated as separate property, but once we had the sale, we could combine those and sell for one money.
Yeah.
Because the Commissioners own them at that point, they have control, versus, you know, at a tax sale, we can combine parcels, but it's kind of a pain, and, you know, they're very strict. Like, if there's a house on two parcels, we can do it, as long as they're both in the exact same name, and they're both delinquent, and they're both, you know, just like you said, it'd be hard to get all those to qualify for that. So, for years, those have not been sold together, but in a deed sale, you've got a lot more flexibility. Yeah.
Because people don't want to pay individual fees for each of these lots, and that's...
And they've been on so many times, they just keep wrapping them up. I mean, the tax sale costs, they get put on every year, 75 bucks.
Whereas, once we take those parcels to deed, all those fees are forgiven, right gone.
Right.
So, so a potential buyer would not be obligated for any of those past fees.
Once we take the possession of the deed, then, can we combine properties even though they're not related? You know, like I say, they're sitting side by side?
Well, you can combine them for the sale, because they're all related at that point, because you own them.
Yeah.
So it's not like, and, and, you know, we'll get a property for the tax sale with a house on two lots, split right down the middle. Well, the people are smart enough, they just pay the taxes on one, the cheapest, because they know nobody's going to buy one lot, and you can't sell the one with the other, and maybe it's in the name of John and Betty Jones, and the other one's just in the name of John Jones, because they never did that. So we can't combine them, because they're in different names. So you eliminate all that in the deed sale, because all of them are going to be in the name of the Fayette County Commissioners. So it eliminates a lot of issues with combining properties. Now, when we talk about combining properties, we're not talking about for assessing purposes, because that's your assessor's job. We're just talking about for the sale. I mean, if I stand up at the sale and say, "We're going to sell these five parcels for one money, and here's how much it is," and you're going to get five, you know, five deeds, deeds to five parcels. But that doesn't change what the assessor does in terms of deciding or not deciding to combine parcels, that's out of, that's in her, in her province.
That's really the surveyor, because you've got to watch, they have to be in the same corner section in every county, so there's, sometimes, even if the outsides on two lots, surveying.
Can't combine, right. Whole nother, yeah. There you go, bringing the surveyor to this.
Yeah.
But, yes, those are issues that we face a lot in tax sale, but some of those are eliminated in this process, again, because we're just talking about selling them together, we're not talking about combining them for taxation. Any other questions?
I think the pros weigh outweigh the negatives.
I would accept the motion that we go to a deed sale, even though I'll not be here to benefit from this process.
Jane, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions, go ahead.
Because you will be dealing with it.
Well, yeah, certainly, you don't want to keep hold of these, you've got a parcel, bring them back on the tax, and you can do it to get rid of them.
I mean, if we can get, if we can get two-thirds of these back on in private ownership, it's a win, for us, I think, isn't it?
I'd move that we...
Can we vote on this, when we have to, we can have a regular meeting to vote?
No, this is a public meeting, it's been advertised, and we have some public here.
I'd move, I would move that we would enter into an agreement with SRI.
If he gets a resolution, are we going to pass the resolution?
And approve the resolution to go to, take parcels to a deed sale.
All set in motion.
Do we need to approve this resolution first?
I include it in my motion. I included it in my motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. I will read this resolution approving the sale of county-owned properties under Indiana Code 36-1-11 ET SEQ, using services provided by SRI Incorporated. Whereas, Board of Commissioners of Fayette County have or will acquire deeds to certain parcels of real estate in Fayette County identified in Exhibit A, whereas the Fayette County Commissioners has endeavored to return these parcels of land to productivity on the tax rolls by way of selling them at public auction pursuant to Indiana Code 36-111 ET SEQ. Whereas, the Fayette County Commissioners is authorized to sell the parcels to be deeded in the name of the Fayette County Commissioners pursuant to Indiana law. Whereas, the Fayette County Commissioners, in accordance with Indiana Code 36-113, approve the sale of parcels needed in the same, in the name of the Board of Commissioners of Fayette County by way of public hearing. Whereas, in order to conduct the sale of parcels, the Fayette County Commissioners shall enlist the services of SRI Incorporated, an Indiana vendor with extensive experience in conducting auctions for sale of real estate. Whereas, the Fayette County Commissioners shall conduct the public auction pursuant to Indiana Code 36-111 with the assistance of SRI Incorporated. After publishing required notices in accordance with the work plan to be developed by vendor SRI Incorporated, now therefore be it resolved by the Fayette County Commissioners. Number one, the Fayette County Commissioners shall dispose of the parcels of land deeded in the name of the Board of Commissioners of Fayette County by way of public auction prescribed in Indiana Code 36-111. That the Fayette County Commissioners is authorized by law to conduct the auction in an effort to return the lands to productivity on the tax rolls pursuant to Indiana Code 36-111. The Fayette County Commissioners shall enlist the services of SRI to conduct the auction of parcels. The Fayette County Commissioners shall follow applicable state statutes governing the sale of parcels to conduct the auction in order to dispose of the parcels. Exhibit A to the relationship, and this lists the 44 parcels that are going to be deeded to the Fayette County Commissioners.
You want any letters, you put a number on that, Jane?
Yeah, 2018 R.5.
Resolution for 28 R.5.
So then, we need to, our next step will be to go to the title, seek out a title company?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we bid there now?
Well, that's what I was wondering, maybe at least take quotes.
Advertise for bid on that, Jane?
And each of those packets has my card, please, don't hesitate to email me, call me, that's my cell phone number on there, it is on there. You have a question or anything at all, I mean, that's why I'm here.
That's day or night, right?
It is. Just don't use it for evil. You know, I've surprised people, because of my age, I get up in the night a lot, so I surprise people, get emails at 3:00 in the morning back, so, but I prefer closer office hours, but, you know, 6:00 till 10:00 would probably be okay. And, and really...
Does that mean I have to get up at 6:00 AM to send you? It's not on the agenda.
Right, and I really, and I encourage you guys, you three, to, to talk this up too, because, you know, we can, I hope we get some good press over it and all that stuff, but, but talk it up, and if you get a chance to bend the ear of the reporter, any chance you get, that we can get some, some good publicity to the sale. I will, the first thing I will do, which will probably be a week after Thanksgiving, because I'm going to be on vacation, but, a week after Thanksgiving, I'll get a calendar ready that will have the date of the sale, so then you'll know, you know, when you're talking it up, you'll know what the date is. And it will also get Jane in her office, and you all, listening to all the things that we're going to be doing, when it's going to appear in the newspaper, all that kind of stuff.
Now, when these notices are sent out, that you were talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Do they go out to the adjacent property owners as well, that, that these properties are going to be sold, or?
Yes, the first batch of notices go to the interested parties, the people listed on the title search. So if there's a mortgage, if there's a judgment lien, and there will be judgment liens, there always are, of course, judgment lien holders don't know what to do, and they don't do anything, because they've got a, you know, Atlas Collection has a doctor bill against the person who owned that house for $400, they take that notice and it goes right in the trash, because they don't, they're not going to come in and redeem these properties for their $400 medical bill. So, the only people that really show up is if any of them have mortgages, otherwise, but the notices go with anybody that has a mechanic's lien, judgment lien, you know, contract purchase, or anything like that, they'll get the notices. That's a result of the title search.
Okay.
So we take the results of the title search, and we send the notices.
But then, advertising the sale, notices don't go out to the adjacent property?
They don't go out at all, they're just the newspaper, yeah. Yeah, we'll set the date of the sale, and we'll, you know, and that's a couple notices in newspaper. Yes, ma'am.
The Harry Plann Commission meeting passed, or recommended to send off the signed ordinance for approval by the Commissioners and the City Council earlier this week. And as a part of it, they've been, Bill McDaniel has been working on it for three years, but they're, in the public hearing, they brought in versions of signage that people have put up in people's yards to notify, well, number one, there's a garage sale going on here, or, number one, the house is for sale by owner, or whatever, but my husband has always suggested that, you know, you would get a lot more interest in some of these sales if there were a sign put in the yard, so that the neighbors got to see that there was going to be a sale of this property coming up, because too many people today don't get the newspaper, they don't see it in a legal notice, but if there were a sign... but if there were a sign on that property so many, you know, a week or two ahead of the sale, that the Commissioners or the county would get a lot more interest when it came time to those sales. So I don't know if that's something that is being done somewhere else, but like Gary said, if there isn't a notice...
That's what concerns me, if the adjacent property owner who has a gym placed on it...
Right.
And been using it, if they don't read the paper or anything, they're not going to know that they can purchase and now own that piece of property.
Yeah, two things to that. One is, if we can get a good list from your GIS of the adjoining landowners, which I know they do all the time for zoning appeals and all that stuff. We'll send a letter to anybody that owns a piece of property within whatever the, like 100 feet or whatever the, and I know your GIS system does that because they all do now, and back 100 years ago, when I did some zoning work, I'd always go in and get the names of all those people, and I, because you had to send them notice. We would just send them a letter, a generic letter, that says, there's a property on our sale, go to this website that joins your property, or in your neighborhood, or however you want to say it. That's the first one. On the signs, that's a little more problematic because we find they disappear because...
People don't want...
Person's using it, they don't want anybody to buy it.
They don't want anybody else to buy it.
And if the owner wants to keep it without paying taxes, suddenly the signs disappear. Or they got moved next door, they, you know. So we've, we've done the sign thing, now granted, maybe it was places like Lake County, which, you know, that's a whole different ballgame, but, but still, those signs tend to get moved and disappear. But we, but we'd be happy to send those letters, yeah.
That, that's what I'm more interested in, is the adjacent property owners receiving some type of a generic notice that...
We typically have people show up at the sale, they've got their little letter, and they said, you know, I want to know which property this is, so, yeah. But yeah, we could do that with the help of your GIS system, yeah.
I've attended several of your sales, and I have found that the people that have the properties next door to these properties check out, and they come every time, and they pretty well, they know that the properties are going to be for sale, and they're always there.
They've been watching it for a few years, yeah. And they sometimes come to the tax sale, and they're only going to bid if somebody bids again, bids on that property.
Yeah.
And then they get interested because they don't want to lose it.
Okay.
Mike, there's that, is there one on Summit? There's a house in a lot on Summit under two different names that are on the tax sale. Because, well, there's a lady, a pinny in her office, the daughter owns one lot, but it's a hilly lot, and there's a really nice house, well, a bigger house that sits here, but they didn't want this lot, so in order to get that lot sold, you can combine them, but they'd be two different names, but it'd have to wait until it got into the Commissioner's name, and they want to sell it together so that they buy that lot.
Do you have the signature copies, Jane? Do we, does all three of them have to sign?
No, we can just use, yeah, just use one of the, what he gave you as an original, and everybody's signing.
Kind of like that works, like a combined one? Because if they have to be combined by the end of the year before, they can be considered combined, like the 1920s, so it's, does it happen, it stays in the Commissioner's name as tax free for a while?
Until they get sold to, to a citizen. And like I say, I'd recommend that we, and I will talk more about the eBay style, buy it now kind of a thing, but otherwise, we, what we do is, Wayne and other counties, properties don't tell, they just keep coming back. And like I say, we did that for several years, and also one day I left, and all the properties were sold. I mean, ones that had not been sold before, and I was, I remember that sale, I said, hey, I got three properties left. You know, and they were all for, each one were 50 bucks. I said, I'll sell them all to you for 150, and I had a guy actually raise his hand and bid on it. I thought, you know, I've been saying this for 20 years, I've never had anybody take me up on it. So it was great, it was great. So the people at Wayne County just say, you know, there's one of our properties was sold, so.
Here's the resolution, and she's signed in the contract.
Well, thank you for your time, Seth. I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I appreciate the education.
Well, I did some, I had lately some, at the Commissioners Conference, did some panels. I haven't, haven't really put in to do that for a couple of years because I feel like, I was doing them every year, and I feel like, you know, you guys need to hear about something else.
Can we get your copies?
Oh, yes. Yeah, perfect. And I'll get a counter sign back.
And on this contract with you, it's Commissioner's name, and we've got room for two signatures.
Two signatures.
And after printed, it says ITS, what is that?
Oh, title.
Oh.
Yeah. Are you the president or the vice president or?
I'm the president, he's the vice president.
Yeah, that's what that, that's, it's vice president, it's president, the board. And if you need to have a third signature, just take it on there at the bottom.
Okay. We'll, we'll have Mark sign down there without...
So I, yeah, I'm surprised you didn't want to write the, the last page.
The last page has a place for Mark's signature.
Oh, okay. There's another page, too. They just run out of space on that page.
Yeah, we need to fix that up, like a stray signature. Of course, at the back sale, we've got their signature on electronically, so we have their own signature on the certificates.
Jane, do you have a suggestion how we should advertise for the title companies? Just to...
I would just reach out to them and ask them to give us quotes, I wouldn't advertise that, because there's only two of them.
Is there only two now?
Yeah. And if you advertise them, you've lost a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
You want to make a question?
Okay. So would you want to notify them and ask them to...
You didn't have anything else to do with it?
Well, I'll take care of that.
Maybe give, give us a quote by next, our next meeting, Tuesday, maybe?
Thank you.
Because it sounds like we really need to get on there.
So it's, it's 44 properties, sorry, it's 44.
44.
You should ask him for a copy of that.
How would, do you know, I, I don't know how title company, because they charge by time?
By parcel.
By parcel?
Give you a straight fee, say we'll do 150 pieces or whatever. I don't know what Wayne pays. We're doing one in Delaware, and I don't think they did much negotiate, I think they just accepted the first price they got, and it was 180, which is a little high, I think.
So in that 150 to 175?
Yeah, I, yeah, exactly.
Is what we need to be looking for?
Right.
Okay.
And it's, it's a, it's a pretty good chunk of business. I mean, 44 title searches, and these, I mean, title companies are used to title searches coming in one at a time, I mean, from closings for houses. So if they get, and, and, you know, 44 is a lot, and many of them are the...
If they get $100 a piece, they're doing a pretty good chunk of change.
And you've got, like the assessor said, so many with the same name, and like that whole, how many lots are back there, nine or whatever you said?
Yes.
And that's nine parcels. Probably subject to one or two searches, because they're all, were probably all platted at the same time, and have been in the same name and the same owners all along, so you're really doing, you know, title searches are, you've got some of their home runs that you can, you can get done for, make good money on one, and you've got others that you struggle with, and you spend five, five times on it because it's such a mess. So, you know, title companies take that, they just even bounce them out, take a chance.
The advantage of the tax, having the deed sale, is all of that searching and research and everything's done upfront, and it's already done.
Right.
When they walk out, they'll have, they basically have a deed in their hand.
They won't have to do, you won't have to do it again unless you, you know, dig up some old ones from, you know, we might do an update, an updated search, but you would, you've never needed to do a long title search on those properties, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Is there anything else we could talk about today?
I don't think we advertised anything else, did we? I, I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
If you move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. This meeting...
There's no spare one, though.